Thursday. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to Budget Workshop number three, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And may have a motion, please, to move out of executive session.
So moved.
Sue, in a second.
In a second.
By Linda, all in favor? Thank you. And Mr. Freeman will let you lead us through the third workshop.
All righty, thank you. Gonna give me the keys, Cindy? There they are, all right.
They're all yours.
Let me share my screen. Okay, because everybody see Budget Workshop number three title slide? We're good to go? All right, we got a lot to cover, a lot of changes in the last ten days from the state. So we could hop right into it. So our agenda for this evening, we're gonna go over the state aid updates. We're gonna focus a little bit on the foundation aid changes, some changes to expense-based aids. UPK, huge changes on that front, take some time. Normally, we don't spend a lot of time on our budget process with federal money because it is kept separately. But I think we need to really dive into that because this was unprecedented revenue that has come to the district. We'll go over the other major revenue sources and then take a look at two versions of two different budgets of which direction we can go on. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of changes to kind of work through on the state side. So thought we'd take a little trip back to the future down memory lane and look at, you know, the last three hundred and sixty-five days. Because, boy, have things really changed in, in a year from where we're sitting right now, what's going on? And planning for this budget compared to what was happening in last April when it came to budget. So let's do a little trivia. Who remembers these four look-back periods? Was kind of like the phrase of the day. We had these four periods where we were gonna get these economic updates. Every, at the end of these periods, gotta have rolling aid cuts. And aid was gonna be held at twenty, twenty percent of our aid payments. And we were gonna lose somewhere between five and ten million dollars. So, you know, that was less than one year ago when this was our economic state aid reality. I think a lot of people have forgotten about these look-back periods and, and the nuances of what was going on. So lots and lots of changes. So just as a review, these were our two thousand and twenty, twenty-one final budget numbers as far as state aid. If you remember, last year, we went down our foundation aid because we were expecting cuts. So we planned for that, so we expected foundation aid to go down a little bit. And then everything else, pre-status quo, same expense base that we always get. But then you see, just as a refresher, we had the pandemic adjustment. And then the first COVID stimulus, which was the CARES Act, money in, money out for this year. So just as a refresher of what was going on as we were planning for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. And then, just to kind of piggyback to compare, we looked at this in February, but it's, I wanted to reincorporate it because I think it's good as another reference point. This is what we talked about in early February with the governor's projection. You know, we're, we're in that timeframe, still economic doom and gloom, what's going on? You know, we see the consolidation of services aid. So these zeroed out because they become a new aid category. Universal pre-K staying the same, pandemic adjustment goes away. We get the STAR payment, which really is an aid added to our runs. What does this mean, what's gonna happen? And then we see this funding adjustment, which will come into play a little bit later on when we talk federal aid. Seven point nine million dollars gets subtracted. And then COVID stimulus, if you remember, that's the CARES two got passed in December, also called CRISA, Coronavirus Relief and Restoration Supplemental Act is the acronym for that. So you see that too as part of, you know, framing of where we're going. So just in January, we have this governor's projection, which isn't great. To the last two weeks, well, what happened? What is happening? You know, we've had a lot of different information over the last ten days. School boards, the school business officials, state aid groups running webinars to see what's really changed. So how did we get here? We got a one point four billion dollar increase in foundation aid from the governor's proposal to legislative. All the other aid categories, as current law goes, that's what's getting happened, that's what they're getting funding. So in essence, no service aid consolidation. A huge expansion of UPK across the state. Districts that were not getting any kind of UPK money now, now get UPK money. And ours, you'll see, has gone up tremendously. And there is actually a new property tax relief bill. Early indications are this is kind of targeted towards Long Island. It's a, the check program is returning. There are some income limits and thresholds do apply. I believe it's nine percent. If you pay more than nine percent of your adjusted gross income, you get, on average, about a three hundred and fifty dollar rebate check. So, you know, small new program, very limited targeted audience. So how do, how did we get here? What's going on? So what changed? So really, state economics weren't that bad. If you rewind a year, the overall push of the deficit and the shortfall really weren't as bad as projected during the March lockdown in early April, when the stock market went down. So one of the key figures in February, tax projection actually is nine point eight billion more than what October of two thousand and twenty was. Now, we're probably used, because I, I know I'm used to it, and we've shared this information before. Usually every October for several, several budget cycles, the governor is always saying that, well, we have a huge deficit. We have a huge deficit collapse. And his numbers don't exactly jive with the, the division of budget, which the governor controls doesn't often align with what the comptroller is saying and what some other groups are saying. Because December is a big month for our economy with Wall Street bonuses, which drives a huge portion of it. So I think there was a little of that gamesmanship. So we didn't really get this huge, huge economic collapse that people were predicting. You know, a transition to work from home, you know, select industries were hit, are still hit. You know, tourism, entertainment, food service, a little bit of retail, but they were quick to transition. And I, and I say that because our sales tax, which was supposed to lag considerably behind, saw a small dip for one quarter last year. Every other quarter we've had and that we've gotten has been on par with the year previous. So even sales taxes kind of has returned and did a bounce back fairly quickly. So a lot of those huge economic indicators really didn't come to fruition. So, you know, we have that going, what, what really changed? Plus, there are some new taxes on wealthier incomes that were created for more to raise revenue. And then mobile sports betting also, they're projecting a hundred to five hundred million, which will help go into the state coffers. Any questions on that before we go on? So there are some long-term worries, and this has been shared a little bit with some of the more fiscally conservative groups out there. Also, I believe New York State School Board shared some of these things with Bob Lowry. It does rely heavily on relief from Washington, which could be short-term. The New York City economy really does drive the state, so we gotta pay attention to that. Will the state tax increases have negative impacts on business flight? And then this little-known Supreme Court case, New Hampshire versus Massachusetts, why is this important to us? Because it's challenging states taxing the income of workers who are not, who are now working entirely remotely out of the state. So non-residents alone in New York State accounted for sixteen point six percent of all personal income from New York State. It's more than all of upstate New York contributes. So if that gets challenged, that, in the Supreme Court with, upholds it, then that income could go to a different state and not be part of New York State's coffers. So some long-term concerns, just wanted to share those because those are out there and you'll see them.
Brian?
Yeah, Sue?
Just a quick question. So what you're saying is they're challenging the idea of not where the business is registered or located, but it's where the person is physically working from?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So next is just comparison now of what the legislative budget projected out for us compared to what the governor did. So I highlighted a few things, so you could see right off the bat, change in foundation aid, that's gone up. Services aid no longer exists. So we've now are back to where we started with all of our different aid categories. I've highlighted those in green because even though the legislator is projecting this out for us, these are expense-based, I'll show you later, these get reduced or in some cases go up higher based on where we think we're gonna be spending money in enrollment. So the high cost and the private access cost is driven by students with disabilities and their placements. So that changes, that's a snapshot in time from last December. So we have better data, you know, as we sit right now, so we adjust those. Same thing with BOSI's, that's based on what we spend through June thirtieth of this year. Building aid is all timed on how our paperwork comes through to the state. So we'll have to make some adjustments. Same thing with transportation, that's based off in a projection as well. So from the fall, so we'll have to, we take a look at that and adjust that accordingly because it's really.
Okay, there we go.
All right, we're back. Technical difficulties put aside. So the pandemic adjustment is gone. And I tried to follow what the governor did, so you kind of compare, we have our subtotal. STAR payment was taken off the aid runs, that's no longer there. The funding adjustment is no longer there, the in and the outs. So we just have a pure total aid. You see what has changed mathematically from what the governor projected to now what the legislature is projecting. Be questions on the changes there, the nuances between. It's a lot of going on because the governor had changed the aid run so much compared to the legislature. I just wanted to give you that visual of line by line, even though there's a lot of lines here, but to just kind of give you that comparison of what changed between in the eight weeks of the budget season at the state level. All right, so let's jump into the highlights for us. Lot of information to unpack. So foundation aid, it's officially a three-year phase-in has begun. For Webster, it's a nine point five six percent increase over last year, which is a very large increase. The county average is just a shade under eleven, ten point nine seven. And a new foundation target for Webster, our foundation aid target now is thirty-nine point six million dollars. So with this funding that the state is giving us right here, that thirty-one million eight hundred and twelve thousand is now we're at just about eighty percent of our funding level. So if you plan out the phase-in over the next two years, you're trying to get to certain levels till you're at a hundred percent. Kind of gives you a, a thought process, a, a concept of where the next two years might lead us to be. So this target changes by a whole bunch of different economic factors. So this is actually higher than our target was for two thousand and twenty-one. So every year we have a target, but we've haven't been anywhere near it. So that keeps changing. Then, like I said, the expense-based aids, we're gonna have to make adjustments to transportation, BOSI's, excess costs and building aid. Like I said, these were based on projections from the state, much earlier paperwork filings. Questions on that? So just to give you a visual of how we did with the county on the percent, we're over here at nine point five six. And this is the county schools, suburban districts. If I would have put Rochester CSD in here, it would have skewed the data significantly. The big five got tremendous increases, so it, it would have skewed the data, so I kept it to just the county districts to, for more apt comparison. You could see some districts got larger percentages. And I think what really shows is districts that have been underfunded made out better. Districts with smaller percentage increases had already reached a certain threshold. Like I had showed you, we're about eighty percent of our target on foundation aid. There are districts that are over ninety percent of their target. There are some that are at a hundred percent of their target foundation aid as well. So it ran the gamut of where everybody was at. But overall, for the county, it was just about eleven percent. And we were just a shade at nine and a half percent, so. Questions on that? Now, the foundation in dollars, I kind of, I did sort this to go from least to greatest. Because when we're talking the dollars, the average in the county was two point one million. We were at two point seven. So we got the fourth-largest dollar amount in the county because we had been, you know, were it in the schools that had been at the smallest overall percentage of foundation aid. On the other end are schools that had gotten a majority of their foundation aid. So you can see how that played out. So above average on the actual dollar increase when we would take a look at it. So one of the huge highlights that kind of caught us off guard is because there's been UPK funding added to the budget every year, but generally, we haven't been able to access it when it comes to it. They're very restrictive dollars. Quite often, it was for programs in urban settings or new monies for expansion of current programs. Just money that districts like Webster could never really get to. So when, it was earlier on in the conversations and we saw this pop up, it got passed in the Assembly and, and the Senate's one-house budgets. Never really thought it would come to fruition, or maybe, you know, our grant is three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. Maybe we get an extra, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand. But I don't think we ever imagined, you know, when I was checking Twitter, when the came out, nine-thirty at night, that we would get a one point one million dollar increase in UPK funding. So just to point out, this is a grant that gets subtracted for our aid run. Even though it shows up as state aid, we account for it entirely separate from the general fund. So it works, it's its own self-sustaining thing, like a federal grant. It, it's in a different fund, we get it and we move it over and expense out of the federal fund on it. So really, what do we do next with this? Can we offer UPK to everyone that applies? Can we do it in every building? Do we expand partnerships with contractors? This year, we had about two hundred and twenty-five lottery applicants. And we have around a hundred and fifty students we take every year with the slots we have. This is a, a low year, I think it's really COVID-related. Normally, we get somewhere in the three fifty to four hundred range of UPK, UPK applicants into the lottery system. This really could be the equivalent of a new building or program. You know, how do we disperse students? Can't offer busing because the state still says, no, it's a hundred percent not aidable. And the requirements would, you know, be very, very difficult to come through on that. So I can sense a workshop probably in the future. In about two weeks, the Office of Early Learning is actually doing a webinar with some additional guidance around this. I can't imagine with the additional funding that the state wouldn't send out at least a forty-page document guidance and how to get the money and how to, how to grab at it and move forward with this. So still a lot of questions around this, but I thought we'd take a moment to go over some of the questions that have already started up. And what can we do and how can we expand UPK? And what makes the most sense going forward? Questions on that?
Brian, where are the UPK students housed now?
So right, yeah. So right now, they've bounced a little bit over the years, depending on the room. We have Classic Clem North, Plank North, Schlegel and State Road. And then we have a partnership with a section over at Doodle Bugs, the one over on Jackson Road in Ridge, and that tucked behind Kandig National Bank.
And there's no busing for these UPKs now?
Correct, correct. UPK is a hundred percent non-aidable.
Do we have room in our buildings to even consider this?
So that's one of the things we're starting to investigate, was one of the questions right away of, you know, let, you know, we'll have to do some floor play, layouts and plans and, because sometimes the, you know, the UPK classrooms do have some specific size requirements. So we're waiting to hear about that with the grants and how, how it's going to be administered. What are the regulations and rules and and, and go from there to start answering those questions, Linda?
So is this grant likely you use it or you lose it?
So historically, Mike, if we don't spend our three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars every year, they reduce it by whatever amount we don't spend the next year. So we always, you know, we, we spend a few thousand dollars extra just to make sure. And it's covered in our reporting, we spend every last dollar of that grant. That's the way it's run right now. Who knows? This is a shock, you know, to a lot of school districts. I had a conversation with another district that runs a very similar program, similar size to us from the West Side. And they got a tremendous increase as well, so they have a lot of the same questions. You know, is it feasible to get this program up and running by September one of next year? I don't know, there's a lot of questions. What are the rules? You know, if we don't spend the full one point four million dollars, do we lose it? Do we have to get to that threshold? Are there certain different things we got to do? Lot of questions that the Office of Early Learning has to answer for districts. And I think their, they might have been just as shocked as we were with the funding that came through. So I think it's taken them a couple of weeks to catch up and get that webinar out to us.
Excuse me, this is unrelated, but we lost Sue. She's trying to get back on, so I don't know if anyone can see that issue happening.
She's back in.
She's, she's back in.
She's back in, okay. Okay. Okay, Sue, we were just checking.
Apparently Brendan can't watch Star Wars at the same time that we're streaming.
Okay. Well, this is a great problem to have. I'm sure we'll come up with it, with a solution that works for the community. And it, it's just gonna be such an asset to so many people who struggle to get in and want to win that lottery and, and have to redo their schedules if they don't. So it's an excellent problem to have. Look forward to the solutions that we, that we can work through.
Yeah, we don't want to miss this opportunity and, and let something slide where, you know, because I, I honestly, this will be our number going forward. I think it'll be very difficult to put this out like they did with kindergarten and then kind of take the aid away. I think we'll have this, this was a priority, it, it's coming out that it was a priority. I think this will be something we see into, into the future beyond one year. So, because that's the next hard question is like, okay, do we get the first year funding? And then it's like, oops, you guys are back down to three hundred thousand. And, you know, just say we hired, you know, fifteen new UPK teachers to, for the program type of thing. And now are they gonna pull it in the second year? So definitely some questions that we'll be asking the state. Okay, so next up here are the numbers. So compared to what we budgeted for this school year to what our final numbers are, you can see the foundation aid is a little over three point one. Now, you're probably asking, why does that not totally align with the two point seven, seven-five that I just showed on the previous slide? Remember, for two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, we assumed we were going to get a foundation aid cut going into this year. So that's where we baked the cut. So we actually, for this upcoming year, get an added bump because we're adding that money back into the budget. So that's why it's at three point one and not the pure amount that's shown of increase on the governor, on the legislative run. We are losing a bit between the two years on the high cost. We've seen some enrollment decrease there, so that aid's gonna come down. Our private access costs remain stable. BOSI's aid, we should be spending, we, we intentionally spent less this year from the beginning of the year because of, we're assuming, economic problems. So we're drilling that back down, not getting as much aid projected for next year. Building aid going up because the SPRY project is now complete, so that paperwork is on. Not as much aid as the governor was anticipating based on some earlier paperwork filings we had. So, but this is the number we think with ninety-nine point nine percent accuracy will be at for next year. And then transportation stay flat compared to last year. Small enrollment decreases, which you see, that's what explains the decrease on the hardware and technology and the software library and textbook. And then you see the UPK difference from three hundred and forty-two, nine to one million four hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred. So total aid backing out the UPK up about three point one million dollars. Questions on that? So these are the numbers right here that I used to build our state aid budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. Okay. Now, just to transition, normally, we don't do this. Let's talk about the federal funds because they were substantial. So federal stimulus, eight point nine billion allocated through title grants out to all the districts. Nine hundred million in other education funding, one hundred and fifty-five point four million for the IDEA program. This is gonna cover multiple fiscal years. Early indications are that right now it's through twenty twenty-four for a lot of these federal months, funds. And supplemental funding a hundred percent, and it can't supplant. So that was the big, big issue. And if I go back a few slides here, when I show, this is what the governor was doing, he was supplanting with the federal funds, the seven point nine. Now, the legislature has rejected that and we are at a hundred percent supplemental. Okay, hundred, all that money that seven point nine sub is now turned into supplemental federal funding. The state is not intercepting it. They're, well, they're not intercept, they're intercepting it and making us jump through the hoops like we normally do for a federal grant, but it's not baked into the general fund budget. It is all part of the federal grant budget. Okay?
And this surprised you, right?
Well, yeah. Yep, very much so. So the first one up was that seven point nine that I showed you, just went back to on slide six. That money is what the first bunch of federal funding at the bottom of our aid run. Not a lot of guidance on how to access this yet. Like I said, this is per, Mike, the most surprising that if maybe, you know, half of it might have been intercepted by the state. It was very, very surprised that they held true to the supplement and not supplant on this one. So this is, remember, the December twenty twenty money, the CRISA. And then the most recent federal relief is the American Rescue Plan. We're getting just a shade under five point three million. Some requirements on that that have already come out, you know, a little over fourteen percent on after-school programs and a little over fourteen percent on summer programs. You know, really designed for, you know, COVID catch-up and running some programs like that. And then the balance, what they've said is it will follow, if you can spend it on a title grant, you should be able to use it on this. But, you know, like I said, important to note, all these funds are accounted for in the federal fund, not in the general fund. So we can't pool these all together, shovel it in the general fund and, and do it there. It has to be a hundred percent accounted for in the federal funds, which is our special aid fund. But this is a good thing because it's, it gives us more time to develop, I think, a comprehensive plan and program and get that information out. Because federal grant monies run on a slightly different cycle, usually from September through August. Okay? Any questions on the state or federal aid before we transition over? Talk a little bit on the tax cap and revenue side.
So Brian, what are some of the examples that the federal funds can only be used for? They probably can't be used for transportation, right?
We don't know that yet. Okay. You know, I would imagine there's gonna be some transportation of, of component to help, you know, to, for the summer programs, you know, to pay for transportation to and from. Say if we run, you know, like any kind of, you know, like a math boot camp or something like that, that, you know, from nine to eleven every day. You know, is, how are kids gonna get there if parents are working? You know, I would imagine some guidance will come that transportation will be a part of that, but I'm not a hundred percent sure yet. I'm just taking an educated guess there.
When do we expect to get guidance on this? When do we expect to get guidance on this?
May. I would think.
I'm ready for the summer, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Yep, that, that's, you know, that's why I think they got the three-year window in there.
Right, okay.
So, you know, maybe you get a year, summer one probably won't look like what summer two looks like or summer three.
Right.
All righty. So next up is tax cap update. Everybody's favorite topic. Let's talk taxes. So our first stop, the 114,626,807 is our tax levy limit. That's what I've, we've had since February when we did the draft and then the final. So this additional state aid has left us in the usual position of having about 1.2 million dollars extra after looking at some of our budget needs. So what does that do if we reduce our levy by that amount? So it goes from a 3.18% increase to a 2.10, you know, from 3.5 million to 2.3 million increase. What does this do for projected tax rates? What's that nuance? So I'm going to take you through that right now. What happens with that extra foundation aid if it's applied to the levy? And just as a refresher, what are the three parts that make up tax rates? It's the assessment, which is the local assessor for our four towns of Penfield, Webster, Ontario, and Walworth. Equalization, which is state controlled, and then district controlled is the tax levy. And then I also updated, I put a nice little link here that kind of explains, you know, if you ever, the little nuances about the tax levy, tax rate, tax bills, equalization rates, why is tax cap not the law? To explain the difference of what, what does that all mean and how the levy doesn't always equate to a rate? And there's the three different working parts to it. So without further ado, jump into what our three parts are. So using this levy of 113, the reduced to the 2.1, what do we not know? What am I trying to project and use as estimates? So every June we get re-levees that get sent to us from the towns that we reduce our tax levy in August by these re-levees. On average, every year it's around $50,000. So I use that in this exercise to drop the levy by an additional 50,000. Equalization rates, now these are tentative. They can change up through August. But Webster, right now is 74, projecting Webster to move to 72. So it's a 2% drop. Penfield, same thing. They're at 87, projecting them to go to 85. Walworth in Ontario, Walworth is 86, they're moving up to 100. Ontario, they're at 91, they're moving up to 100. Just by those two towns doing it alone, you're going to, their tax rates will drop precipitously, regardless of anything else that happens when they move to 100% equalization. And you'll see that. And then assessments, what I do, 10-year rolling average, what's the increase year over year for the last 10 years? Webster, a little less than a percent. Penfield 2.2, Walworth 1.26, and Ontario 2.44. Plug all these numbers in to do some projected tax rates. And just before I show them one more time, I will 100% guarantee this estimate will change in August. Mark my words. Every year it does. So just got to put my 100% guarantee on it before I do these estimates. So it's 2.1% levy. You see what I'm projecting using all those data points. You'll see right away, the Ontario and Walworth jump at you, what their reductions are. 250 and 375 dollar decrease per thousand. Large percentages. You see Penfield 13 cents, Webster 26 cents. So about a half a percent and a 1% change when we reduce the levy over 2021. Questions on that? So, you know, this is, you know, mathematical using the 10-year average rate of return on the assessments. Have a pretty good confidence that those equalization rates will come to fruition. But like I said, the state has until August to change those. Think they'll land where they are. So those are what I would project, the 2.1% levy increase where our rates are going to be. So then what's, what happens if we go to the cap? What looks there? 3.18%. Same data points. You see Ontario and Walworth still with a large drop. They just lose some of that large drop. And Penfield and Webster, it's about a 1% change between the two. If we go to the cap, using the same, using same equalization rates, same $50,000 projected on the re-levees and the same assessed value growth. This is what the cap could possibly do. What is that difference? Just subtracted the two, show you the variance, you know, 20 cents to 28 cents on the dollar. You know, one around a 1.07 for Penfield and Webster and a little less than 1% for Ontario and Walworth. Now, if you take the average house, sorry, skip too fast. Does, we use that same amount last year, haven't updated that. What's the bill look like? The yearly difference that a person would pay in the difference between a 2.1% levy and a 3.18 would be anywhere from 44, 47 to $62 a year. That's the difference between the two potential tax bills. Questions on anything I did there on, on the levy? Anything I need to explain more or maybe not quite clear?
So Brian, this does include all the money from the First CARES Act and the Second Stimulus? That's factored into this whole budget? Or are those because they're federal funds or will be supplemental?
So are you going back to the very original pandemic adjustment that from, that came out in April of 2020? Are you talking about the December 20?
The, the December and then the one they just passed?
Yeah, not, both of those are separate. We can't account that in the general fund. This is purely utilizing the extra foundation aid that the district received. Those funds, that 7.9 and the 5.3, that's a pot of money that we'll take and we put it into the federal fund. In essence, we draw down from it. We run a, we run our before-after-school programs, whatever else is allowed. And what we'll end up doing is on a quarterly basis, just like we do with our federal grants now, we apply for whatever we spent, we submit it to the state, they reimburse us back from this pot of money until it's gone.
Great, thank you.
Yep, they can intermix. That was very, very clear. They can intermix. The levy difference is 100% on the foundation aid increase that we got. Did everybody freeze? Oh, no, I thought I had a couple frozen screens. Sorry. Okay. So then our other revenues, there's really not too many, the, what I call the other 10%, because 90% of our revenue is state aid or property taxes with the tax levy. So sales tax projects remain on target. You know, we're not seeing a dip there at all. So we're going to remain on target there. Payments in lieu of taxes, our pilots projected to remain stable as well for next year. Fund balance, maintain the same level of appropriated fund balance. We've made that commitment of 5.5 million dollars to subsidize the levy from years past. We're going to maintain that. We are able to allocate some of the state aid to reduce our reserve usage. So you'll see that. Interest rates are still extremely low, but we, we have a aggressive in our money movement. So we should stay same budgetary amount on the interest. And then on the miscellaneous side, our facilities usage revenues, continuing education revenues projected to increase based on some expanded programming. And really reopening of our facilities for next year is what we're projecting. So I gave you a three-year look back and what we're projecting on those revenue streams here. You see sales tax been stable for four straight years. You see the extra state aid, the 3.1, $75,000 increase in those miscellaneous. And then you see the reduction in the use of reserves, keeping our appropriated fund balance the same. The reduced tax levy, it's a 2.3. Overall total revenues, 188 million. By the numbers. So not a lot of different movement here. State aid, the addition of the miscellaneous revenue, reduction of the reserves. So then we have a couple of budget scenarios based on that. So budget ones based on the 2.10% tax levy. So here are those numbers. What's changed from budget workshop number two to get us to a 2.64% increase? So what's really changed? And it's an increase of 624,781. We went from that 2.3 to a 2.64 with that extra foundation aid funding. What are some of the major changes? So first is mental health support, 4.0 additional staff added to PPS to support social emotional learning. What are those? 4.0 gets us to a position where we can create some parity amongst the elementary schools with, and balance those out. That's where the, the four comes from. That's, you know, it wasn't just plucked out of the air. It allows Colleen and her staff to kind of systemic, bring some systemic parity amongst the buildings with some uniformity around social workers and psychologists. So that's was where we think the most needed change would be. So that's where that was added. Special education information is always a good thing. So it's, we always look at BOSI's placements based on student enrollments. So we've had a little extra time here now to kind of relook and see what's going on. So we see enrollment, we have better numbers to project for next year than when we were talking six weeks ago. So uptick there, an extra $100,000 in BOSI's placements for next year as part of this budget. Next, going along with the have the best data and conversations around us, an extra $100,000 around the network infrastructure. Because, you know, as we've all seen, two local districts in the Western New York area experienced huge problems. So we were planning this infrastructure work to be about a year away. We're fast forwarding that forward with some server infrastructure upgrades that will bolster our cybersecurity. So, you know, it was timely. And the extra foundation aid allowed us to take a look at this and like I said, I don't want to be the one to call karma on Sunday night that I clicked on the wrong link and now we're all frozen out of everything. So money well spent in this day and age, we're just seeing nothing but an uptick in all these areas. So we were always looking to see where our weaknesses are and try to bolster those. So this was a great opportunity. And then lastly, with the budget at 2.1, we could fully fund all of our per pupil models for all the building budgets. So it's adding back about $125,000 when we run, when we run the internal formulas that we do. They really did experience the crunch a lot this year when we didn't know what was happening. So it felt good to give some things back because this money gets right in the hands of staff with supplies and things and field trips and getting all that money back into the buildings, back to kids, as close to kids as possible to do some of the great stuff like field trips and things like that again. So those were the four main areas that we were able to do and add additions to the budget while reducing our reserve usage and reducing the levy. So questions on that before we look at scenario two?
Yes, so I know we do a lot of work with BOSI's for cybersecurity. How is this different in our other districts? Probably looking at doing similar investments, giving everything that's occurred.
Sure, yep. Everything we buy is through BOSI's for aid purposes. But we do house some internal servers that aren't on our typical cycle because some of the servers last longer, you know. But we're going to do some, this is going to go towards that if some servers and switch upgrades, you know, for the most part. Modernize them. Fast forward in that a little bit because, you know, when we looked at with our cybersecurity partners, looked at, that's an area that is probably a weak spot and we want to upgrade that right away rather than delay.
Thank you.
All right. So budget two, what happens if we go right to the tax levy limit? Well, obviously that's going to give us some additional funding. So what does budget two look like? You see an increase about 3%, a little over 3% versus last year. So from a 2.64 to a 3%. And where is the two major changes for there? So instead of a 4.0 FTE for mental health, it can go to 11.0. So it's an additional seven different, seven additional mental health staffing for social emotional learning that now can kind of go down the list of what's the next group to address some parity would have a more of a secondary component to this addition with possibly some additional elementary wide support. But a focus with those new seven positions would go more secondary than elementary. And then a reduction in reserve usage as well. So if we're going to add some more positions and grow there, the offset would be to reduce our reliance on reserves. So take some of that extra money and reduce reserves for long-term stability in financial planning. It'll help as we go down the road to get away from that reserve usage. So you see what changes overall in the numbers. They're all the same, still same miscellaneous revenues. We're dropping from 1.5 to $1 million worth from the ERS reserve to get off of that amount. State aid stays the same, appropriated fund balance stays the same. The levy just goes to its cap and the remaining dollars get spent on additional mental health FTEs. So no matter what, the budgets are balanced either way, both one and two, no deficit. You can move forward with either or. And I know Colleen's on the call. She could, you know, answer some more questions with specificity around the social emotional learning piece or, you know, or Brian or Aaron too.
I guess, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
My question would be more around why the focus more on elementary for the social emotional? I'm just wondering, I'm, I work with the middle school population. So the 12 to 17 range seems to be pretty popular right now with mental health. So I'm just wondering like, if you'd be a little bit more specific on the plan and maybe why elementary is more of a focus than secondary unless we hire more?
That's a great question, Janice. And it really is about that early intervention approach. And we have seen a significant uptick in the mental health needs at the elementary level as well. I would say it's probably equal to what we have at our secondary from the reports and really being able to turn that around before we get into middle school and high school would be a big focus for us. And right now we have some shared staff across buildings at the elementary level. And mental health and being able to make them full-time in buildings would make a big difference with that.
I guess my question is kind of similar. How did you come to arrive at, at that number at 11? I do greatly appreciate the proactive, trying to intervene as soon as possible when there is an issue identified. How, how to arrive at 11 positions, first of all? And then how would you look at maintaining those or evaluating the need in number going forward?
So the first thing I did was I, you know, we, as part of our, you know, budget process, you know, we, we do the formulas with the buildings and then we have our, you know, our conversations with, with the administrative cabinet, we have conversations with elementary and secondary admin and staff and, you know, Karma has a conversation, you know, every, every two feet he walks a building around needs and what's happening. So, you know, we kind of have that running record. So, you know, in essence, there, I, there's a list. So, you know, in essence, there, there's a list of, you know, what are the most important things that keep coming up? That are requested from everybody. And it could be the kindergarten teacher that I have a conversation with to the elementary principal, to an email from a community member. So we have, you know, Tammy, I guess, in essence, I went to that list first. When I saw how much this was that on that Tuesday night. And Wednesday morning, we started having the conversation of, okay, what can we pull in play from that list of needs? And and try to balance it out. The seven came from, you know, calculated out an FTE cost and tried to balance with, all right, that systemic question you asked of what makes sense? So how do we keep this going? So we keep it going by reducing what on the financial side, on the reserves, we need to outweigh in, in comparison to FTEs that are getting added. So we've reduced reserves by over a million and we're, we're literally adding a million dollars in, in new FTEs that way.
And Tammy, just one other point and and Colleen, I want you to jump in here. But Colleen has a pretty detailed plan that is, you know, sort of. It's a, it's like a three or four year plan that really looks at the social emotional support. And what, what a plan would look like from K, you know, basically from elementary to middle to high school. And in terms of, you know, how much social work support could we, could we now begin to add how much school psych at all, at all three levels? And try to align it with, you know, best practices and also that. On a, on the national level, like what, what, you know, what the research would, would tell us, okay, here's a system that works really well at the elementary for middle and for high school. And, and I know we've used that plan that Colleen shared with us over the last few weeks based on, based on these numbers. But Colleen, if you just want to add a couple little pieces or insight, that'd be great.
Yeah, and it's really thinking about, I know we've talked to you guys before about the MTSS, that multi tiered systems of support. And really thinking about how can we bolster our tier one, which would get to eighty percent of our kids? And thinking about between school counselors, social workers and school psychologists and those different domains, kind of really trying to think about creating teams that address a smaller, you know, and reduce the number of students that they're responsible for so that work can be done more intensely with them. And that they can consult to our classroom teachers so that they feel empowered to be able to address some of those things in the classroom. So it's really thinking about building those systems. And each of those domains has some very specific things that they can do. So we don't want to have just all psychologists at one building or just social workers. We really want to have a balance.
Right, right. Excellent, thank you very much for that.
Right, and I try to balance the, you know, the long term with adding some specific FTEs, which we haven't done like this in a considerable amount of time. With the long term financial health and it balances out.
So we don't know what needs kids might come to school with, right? We don't know the full impact of this and I'm sure there are ways that you'll, you'll measure and you'll understand what needs to happen. But how do we, I'm sure you've had conversations around estimating what that might look like and how we can be prepared. So I would think that this scenario would put us in a really good position for whatever needs that our students might have.
Yeah, and Tammy, our staff has been doing a great job since the, you know, since the closure way back last year in monitoring our students and collecting that data over time and what they need. Excuse me, in surveying staff to find out, you know, what they're seeing for kids. So we have a pretty good sense of a majority of what the needs will be, but there will always be surprises too.
Thank you.
Brian, is there a future monetary disadvantage by not going to the tax cap?
Um, yeah, I mean, every year, I think it was a few years ago, Mike, I did the projected out. If you go bullet, you know, if you leave that, every year springboards off of the previous year. So every year that, you know, so say for round numbers, you're a half a million dollars less. You go under the cap this year than compared to next year. So you're starting off lower than you would have. So you're gonna, that's going to expand and you, you'll lose those dollars out into the future. That is, yeah, that, that does happen.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
So what might be the opportunities of using some of the federal funds to address any needs that we might have in this area?
Um, I don't, right, without specific guidance, I don't, you know, I don't know if it's affirmative that we could do it. I'm going to go out on a limb and say we probably will be able to. But I can't say definitively like, you know, I could pick up my state brochure and say, yep, oh, it's, it's approved. So it's still yet to come on that. I couldn't in my wildest dreams imagine that they would push back on, you know, if you tucked two social workers and two psychologists into this additional money to help kids transition back into, you know, from remote learning for a year into in person that are struggling. You know, I, I can't see that happening.
Okay, so then that's an option. Okay.
That's what you just said, right? It would be an option, a potential option.
I would think so, yes.
Any other questions?
So just to give you some highlights of dates, you know, I know Cindy and I prepared for adoption tonight if you so choose. If not, I know we just have to approve the property tax report card notice could go either or. It just has to be done by next Friday. May first is when we'll publish our budget materials. May sixth is the budget hearing, eighteenth is the vote, and then July one is our new fiscal year. And then just want to make sure that federal stimulus will probably have a lot more guidance on that. Because title grants aren't due till August thirty first. They run a September one to August thirty first. So this federal money I can see spilling guidance spilling into May, June. And and getting more information on what we can do with it. Even after the budget's passed or possibly even after our fiscal year starts for the general fund. I know it was a lot, so please, anything, even go back slides, anything, any questions, please.
If I miss this, I apologize. Is there a bus proposition this year?
There is, yep. Yeah, we, that was in workshop, I think in one workshop, one, we went over that. And it's in the budget notice too, if you look, actually, let me just drag it over. Property tax report card. Can you see this kind of fun Excel document? Proposition one, one million five hundred sixty six thousand. It's a school buses. It's our normal cycle, nothing exciting. Ten buses go out, ten buses come in, big buses, five littles go out, five littles come in.
So the question is then, do we want to move into the regular business portion of the meeting and have some of this conversation? In a public setting and then talk about what everybody would like to do in terms of the budget adoption?
Aren't we in a public setting right now?
Yeah, you're in a public, this is a public meeting, so you can have the conversation now if you'd like.
But do we, I understood that we had to move into a business meeting to be able to conduct the votes instead of a workshop setting?
Okay, I see what you're saying, yes. So yeah, you can start the discussion now. And then when you're, when you guys are ready for your, for your action, we'll just, we'll let Cindy know.
We'll move in, okay. Okay, um, I guess I'll just share a few thoughts. We're, we're in a position that we never thought we'd be in to have foundation aid finally made good and additional federal money. I think, I mean, although we don't know what those guidelines are, are going to be. There is just so much conversation around addressing learning gaps and addressing social, emotional and mental needs of students. So I have to imagine that we'd be successful in finding ways to make that effective. They're both, both scenarios are very appealing and it's, it would be gauging what the, the community would be supportive of. And what our recommendations and our conversations with the community would be to be able to elicit that support. It's excellent news and excellent work, thank you, Brian. It seems like you had a lot of fun making this presentation.
I enjoyed finding this on slides carnival, I like this one, my favorite backgrounds.
So anyone, please, please jump in, share your thoughts, ask questions.
I mean, I certainly don't want to turn down, you know, extra mental health support. I mean, that's been a huge push of mine from the beginning. My only concern is, you know, we are over a year now into a pandemic and how much can we really ask of the public? Taxes go up, taxes never go down. So if we push it and push it and push it, like, you know, it's just a year where we, we want to make sure we, we pass an effective budget and everyone's happy. And we're not pushing our taxpayers to their limit or beyond. So I know it seems like a little bit, but not everyone is in the same boat after a year of this. So that, that's my only hesitation with two is, are we trying to do too much? But again, like, I'm, I'm open to what everyone else thinks.
It's true, because some people will see an increase and not want to entertain what it's for. So that's, that's absolute, that's the risk, that's the concern, yeah, absolutely.
Can I speak now? Can you hear me?
Can you go louder?
Okay, when I, when I'm trying to, you know, do the pluses and minuses of both of them.
For the number, for the second scenario where you would hire eleven mental health staff. You know, I would just hate to be in a position to hire eleven staff members. And then, you know, in two to three years, you know, hit that cliff that we're all kind of afraid of. So that's my concern with number two. Number one, you know, like Tammy said, we've never really had, had the opportunity to provide even a small bit of, of relief to our taxpayers. And this is an opportunity to do that. And it does cover for mental health positions with the potential. And what I'm thinking is likely potential of being able to use the federal funds, which will last for the two, three years, which might be the amount of time that we would need them for. And the only downside of number one is you're, you're leaving a little bit of money on the table in future years. But I think personally, I'd like to give a little bit of taxpayer relief and go with for mental health. And hope and advocate to be able to use the federal funds for that, for additional people. That would be my preference, but I'd love to hear other people's viewpoints.
There's been so much talk across the country and probably the entire world about the mental health of our kids and how bad it is right now for a lot of them. And this is something that we've wanted to do for a long time and, and I, and I agree with you about, you know, the relief. But I don't know if you can put a price on, on children's mental health. I just, it's not just about transitioning, it's about everything that's happening in the world. And, and our kids really need that mental health support. Having been in the classroom for many, many years, this has been way too long to get to and thank God that we can finally do it. I would rather see more help at the beginning of these kids' educational life. Because by the time they do get to the middle and the high school, then maybe, you know, a lot of the issues will have been rectified, taken care of. Where they'll be giving coping skills. I like the idea of having the extra mental health, but I'm willing to go with whatever is best for everybody.
You know, I guess we don't know either in the next two to three years, if there are opportunities to expand where we may know, know more clearly what those needs look like. But the idea of expanding and being so well prepared and so assertive out of the gate is, is really appealing. I, I absolutely can see and support both versions.
Something to think about, if foundation aid is going to be, you know, in the catch up mode, there would be that funding to use going forward. And we could gradually transition to more instead of going right to eleven right away, that's an option.
So just be careful though, Sue, because we've been down this road before with Governor Patterson back in two thousand and ten. Where for one year they did foundation aid, they tried to catch it up and it lasted one year. Then within, within a year after that, we had gap elimination. So, yeah, I, you know, just to add my two cents, I am, I will just piggyback on what Maria just said. I think this is an amazing opportunity to make a monumental shift in the way that we can provide mental health support. And I understand for the average home, it's an extra forty to fifty dollars, I get it. I also understand the hardships that we're all facing due to the pandemic or that many of our families are facing due to the pandemic. But I also know that the number one, the number one concern that we've had and that we've worked on since I've been superintendent is, is mental health and connection. And I just, I see this as an opportunity to, to begin to make that happen. If we end up with another foundation aid catch up for next year, my recommendation would be we'd add another eleven mental health support. So, I mean, I think when with Colleen, when I look at Colleen's five year plan or four year plan, you know, it's twenty five to twenty seven FTE, all within mental health. If I'm not mistaken, Colleen, I think it was twenty five.
If we were twenty one, but yeah.
Okay, so it really is, this is something that instead of taking five years, we might be able to do in two or three. And the sooner, for me, the sooner the better, but that's my two cents.
Carl, let me just piggyback on that. If the goal is to get to twenty one, where are we now? Colleen.
And our total FTE, I'd have to count it up for you.
Well, no, actually, Mike, it's, it's an additional twenty one.
Additional twenty one.
Yeah, so it's X, it's X plus twenty one. So now we're looking at either X plus four or X plus eleven. That's, that's where we are.
And so my question for Brian, in the scenario two, we had a five hundred thousand dollar improvement in the reserve on top of the eleven positions. Is that correct? So the increase of.
Correct. Seven hundred thousand. Nine hundred thousand went to FTE, five hundred thousand went to the reductionary reserves. That's where the one. Seven hundred thousand went to FTE, five hundred thousand went to the reductionary reserves. That's where the one point two million went.
So do we have to pick one or two, or is there compromise, take the reserve out, but keep the mental health thing?
That's to the board's prerogative.
Yeah, I mean, we.
So but there there's a reason why Brian wanted to do it this way.
Try to do a million and a million. Reduced by about a million on the reserves while adding a million dollars worth of staff. That's where. Those numbers came from when I looked at version two overall.
So here's my thoughts on on mental health. If you look in the community, people. Struggle to find their children professionals every day to help their child, to to help them over. These issues, so. I always advocate for more mental health in school because it. It helps it immediate, it helps the child and the parent immediately, and they're not left floundering to find somebody in the community. Because those waiting lists are months and months and months, and that is very concerning because the longer they wait. The more severe the problems are, so. I I definitely believe that there is a big mental health crisis and coming back to school, we have no idea what is. What is truly going on in everybody's home. Whether it's advocating for the federal funds. To put towards this or we go with eleven, I think it's important, the more mental health we have in these schools. At at all grade levels, I I think the better our kids are going to be equipped, so. Yeah, I I think it's, we cannot have enough mental health support in our schools.
I I agree with everybody on the mental health. And I'm partially concerned about the optics of, you know, going up to the max we can, but then I think about. It's forty dollars and I don't wanna minimize forty dollars, but. Those who are struggling are getting two thousand dollars or have received two thousand dollar stimulus check, thirty-six hundred dollar. Childcare credit, so they are getting other funding from the government to help them through this pandemic. Including unemployment, if that's their situation. And we're trying to do the best for our students and we're putting our students first. I think option two is the best because I don't think any of us know. The full extent of the mental health issues we're gonna see. Then our best opportunity to get on top of those is option two with the addition of staff. That that's kind of where I'm coming out on this. And I think we just owe it as a communication to make sure people understand that this budget has an increase for mental health. So people don't think it's going towards administrative salaries or teacher salaries or something else, which we know they're not. Unless mental health is considered administrative in the budget, but. It's very specific.
I think our our points of view are are starting to align a little bit here. In viewing this as an investment. It's an investment in our students and overall in our community. And an opportunity that we can do that may not happen in the same way ever again. I just, it it seems to be kind of where everybody is coming from. Stuff, do you have any thoughts you wanna share?
All I can say is, if you've been a teacher at all, you understand the importance of mental health. And. I I favor two.
Mike, do I hear a motion then?
I think so. Are we ready? Does anybody have anything further that you that you wanna say? Okay, then can we have a motion, please, to adopt budget option number two as presented by Brian Freeman? By Maria, second. Okay, see a second. Stuff, okay, thank you. All in favor? Excellent, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. It was a really great exchange and appreciate everybody's input. Now moving on to the property tax report card.
Yeah, make sure I get the right one.
Impact there, yes.
Wrong one. Alright, so property tax report card, nothing really changes, just shows we're going to our cap. The zero right here just says we need just regular approval, we don't need, not breaking the cap, so we're good to go. And then this got added last year, just wanna touch base, we run our projected. And actual reserves that we have to report as part of the property tax cap. So these are just reserves that we have, other districts you will see have other reserves, these are just the ones that Webster has. This is the actual balance on March thirty-first, and then just kind of guessing where we're gonna be at the end of June. So a majority, some of these, we might look to add some additional funding to, most of what I'm projecting. In these areas are really interest earnings. Come that will have by the end of the year, I'm thinking we might have a little extra for our workers' comp reserve, you see that goes up a little bit more. Unemployment, maybe a little bit more there and a little bit more in our TRS sub-fund reserve. So not too much different there, but like I said, it's an early projected from. March of what we think we'll have at the end of June thirtieth. Any questions on the property tax report card? Alright, and then the budget notice looks awfully similar. The only difference is, as you see, it's broken down by administrative program and capital. It also has the tax information on there as well, has the budgeted amount. Has the proposition and what our basic star savings would be, and it announces when and where. The budget vote will be, so these get published in our budget booklet. That'll Krista and I are working on starting tomorrow. And will be a part of those legal budget documents as well.
Any questions on the budget notice? Do these require separate motions or?
Oh, you could tie them together.
They can be together, okay. Excuse me, can we have a motion, please, to accept the property tax card, property report card and budget notice as presented? Stuff second by Mike, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Brian. Okay, moving on to the BOSI's budget and election. If we wanna talk about the budget election first, everybody's had resumes of the candidates. Grateful to all these individuals who wanna continue to serve their communities, especially through BOSI's and all the. Incredible services that our district is able to take advantage of specifically. Is there anything you wanna add to the election portion, Brian?
No, this is a pretty standard, it's our portion, we're just, we get to vote on the administrative part of the BOSI's budget. We are still the largest voter and largest portion of the BOSI's administration, being the largest district in Monroe One, so. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, standard, every year stuff, nothing too. Different this year compared to previous.
Okay, then can we have a motion, please, to accept the BOSI's budget and election as shared with all of us?
All moved.
Stuff?
Second.
Second by Sue, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries.
Tammy?
Yes.
You have to vote on all of the candidates separately.
Okay.
Is it all five? We don't have to choose three or five, it's all five?
All five.
And I do not, I would be going from memory, I don't have all their names in.
Brian, can you let me share or Paul?
I don't think I have the ability, I think Paul controls who can share, right?
Yep.
Yeah, you can share, go ahead.
I can?
Yep.
That one document?
Okay, hold on one second. Okay. The first person is Robert Dixon of Wester Undercoy. And his term begins on July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-four.
I'll make the motion for Bob Dixon.
Second by stuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Second one is Maureen Up of Fairport, same term, July first through June thirtieth. Two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make the motion for Maureen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seat number three is for Tom Nuspeka of Webster. Same term, July first through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Why don't you do it, Sue? Make the motion.
I'll make the motion for Tom Nuspeka.
Now second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tom.
And seat number four is Nancy Seemel of Easter Undercoy, same term.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And seat number five.
Mark Patanovich, Brighton.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Cindy.
Welcome.
Moving on to the reading of the updated twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar in the first day of school date change.
So instead of the kids starting on Tuesday, we're gonna start on Wednesday. Tuesday is a high holy day in the Jewish faith. And we didn't want our our students to have to choose between first day of school and going to temple. Or or basically observing their faith, so we are able to actually make this work. We'll have Tuesday as a professional development day, Wednesday first day with kids, so that's that's the only change that we have.
Okay, can we have a motion then, please, to. Accept the updated twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar and first day of school date change.
So I'll make that motion.
Sue, second by Mike, okay, all in favor? Thank you, and last on the agenda, the consent agenda with the resolution to appoint alternate vote workers. You brought that up, thank you.
I could take a second just to acknowledge Cindy and the amount of work she has done to get people. This is extremely tough year, a lot of our stalwarts that come out every year. Or decide to are sitting this out for, you know, for obvious COVID-related reasons, so. She has done her best QVC job pounding the pavement to get people to come in, so I, you know, be remiss not to. Mention Cindy and the great work she's doing to get people to be able to pull this off.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
So much, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And can we have a a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
All moved.
Thanks, stuff, in a second?
I'll make it, Tammy.
Linda, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Okay, I think that concludes our work this evening, was a lot. Thank you, everybody, for your input, for your thoughtfulness. For your concern, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So I'll make that motion.
Sue, second by Mike, all in favor, alright, have a wonderful evening and a great rest of the week. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Brian, nice job.
Thank you.